Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. I want to thank our works director Dave Ford and DPW for keeping the roads open tonight. Challenging storm. Turned over to rain. But we're here, so I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Wolfboro Board of Selectmen Meeting, February 7th, 2018. It's a regular meeting, calling it to order. Mr. Owen, do we have a need for a non-public session tonight?
Yes, we have a matter of real estate to discuss.
Okay. Start off with approval of the minutes. We'll start with the January 16th, 2018 special meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I have one change. We always underline, wherever it's bolded, it also should be underlined to be consistent with our minutes. That's my only change. I'll make a motion to accept him as amended.
Sorry, comment?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes from January 16th? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next, we have the January 17th, 2018. It's a regular meeting minutes. Board.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minute. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Finally, we have the January 24th, 2018, to special meeting minutes. Board.
Yes, I have the same request. Wherever it's bolded, it should be underlined, similar to the motion in the back.
Okay. I'll take a motion to accept as amended.
So move.
I'll second it. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
I'll abstain. I wasn't here at meeting.
You have our first public hearing tonight. It's a temporary outdoor event permit application. First Congregational Church, Wolfboro, UCC, to hold Easter sunrise service on April 1st, 2018, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. at Albee Beach.
Good evening. My name's Mike Turner, and I represent the First Congregational Church, Wolfboro, and we would like to request the use of the Albee Beach for sunrise service from 6:30 to, excuse me, from 6:00 o'clock to 9:30 on April 1st. It's Easter.
Any members of the, open the public hearing. Any members of the public, audience that have any questions, comments? Close the public hearing. Board members, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the First Congregational Church, Wolfboro, UCC, to hold Easter sunrise service on April 1st, 2018, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. at Albee Beach.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next, we have First Congregational Church, Wolfboro, UCC, to hold morning worship services Sundays only, beginning June 3rd through September 30th, 2018, from 7:30 a.m. to 8:15 a.m. at Cape Park and Town Parks and the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Yeah, again, I'm representing the church, First Congregational Church of Wolfboro, and would request the ability to hold these morning worships on Sunday morning, September, excuse me, June 3rd through September 30th, 2018, from 7:30 a.m. to 8:15 a.m. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the audience, once again, any questions or comments? I'll close the public hearing. Board members.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the First Congregational Church, Wolfboro, UCC, to hold Monday worship, morning worship services, Sundays only, beginning June 3rd, 2018, from 7:30 a.m. to 8:15 a.m. at Cape Park and Town Parks and the Community Bandstand.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Final public hearing tonight is Governor Wentworth Arts Council to hold art show on August 15th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Cape and Town Parks and the Wolfboro Community.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the presentative of the Governor Wentworth Arts Council called me this afternoon, said she would not be in attendance, given the weather, and asked if the matter could either be approved by the board, or else she would be willing to come back to the next meeting.
Open the public hearing. Any members of the audience have any questions, comments? I'll close the public hearing. Board members, how do you feel about approving this without her here?
I mean, she's come every year, same thing. We just have to make sure we put the comment from the fire department about the tents, and I think that's fine with me.
You making that motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Governor Wentworth Arts Council to hold an art show on August 15th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Cape and Town Parks and the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Second then.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay. Next, we have the bulk vote.
Mr. Chairman, I need to step down from D1.
D1, okay.
So I'll move to remove that from the bulk vote.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll go with the rest of the bulk vote first. Bulk vote, this includes weekly manifest, property tax abatements and refunds, operating tax credits and exemptions, and notices of intent to cut wood or lumber. I'll take a motion to accept the bulk vote with the, with D1 being removed from it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the bulk vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, now we'll take up D1.
Make a motion to approve D1 of the bulk vote. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next, under new business, we have appointments.
Right.
We have Emergency Operations Planning Committee.
Right, the fire chief asked me to reorganize the Emergency Operations Planning Committee. The chief has applied for and received a grant which will fund a consultant to assist us with this process, and we need to get going with it because there's a time, timeframe it has to be done by. So I contacted all the people that had served on the old Emergency Operations Planning Committee to see if they were still interested, and I also contacted the three institutions that also participated in this effort last time, being Brewster Academy, the hospital, and the school district, to make sure that we have representation from those groups. And so I provided you a list of proposed appointees, and we're proposing a term that would expire a year from April, so that we don't have to reappoint them in like two, a month and a half or so, when you do annual appointments. Also, I should mention, before we went home today, Matt Sullivan asked me if there was some reason that I hadn't put him on this group, and there was no real reason, aside from the last time we did this, the planning director wasn't part of it. But if Matt wants to be part of it, you know, I think the board may want to consider adding his name to the list of appointees.
I'm good with that. I think if he'd like to be on it, I have absolutely no problem. I think he'd be an asset for it, so.
I don't have any problem. I just hope he's not biting off more than he can handle. He's got that whole master plan, so I, if he'd like to be on it, I'm fine, but I also don't want him to get over his head in his commitments.
That's sort of my concern.
Yeah, I think the master plan's going to take a lot of his time.
We are using-
But I don't have any problem. It's not an issue.
Also, we are using a consultant on the master plan, and also to relieve some of that load off of Matt, so the consultant will be doing a lot of the legwork type stuff that we hadn't done, done like that before, so.
If I may, one of the perspectives we're looking at, this emergency operations plan as well, is the whole planning aspect, and what we mean by that is, the more people we have involved in it, in the conceptual planning, the better idea they will have to be able to input the plan and put it into play when needed. And Matt, based on some of his planning abilities with the town, I think will become a key component of that emergency operations plan, should it become implemented in the event of an emergency.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Owen, have all of these members you contacted, have they all agreed to come back on it?
They have.
With that being said, I would make a motion to appoint, you know, the list of people that were on the previous plan that Mr. Owen supplied, in our agenda here, plus adding Matt Sullivan's name to the, to the list.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a, under new business, we have a boat agent agreement. Goodeween Hawkins Navy Yard seeks to be designated as the boat agent for the Town of Wolfboro. Mr. Owen.
Yes, this is an annual renewal of the agreement. It's been a very remunerative agreement for the town, so we would only recommend its approval. I believe the boat agent representative is here this evening, if you have any questions for him.
Board, any questions?
No, but I think we should point out to the public that they bring in $36,496 last year, so it's a real plus for us.
Absolutely.
That figures between what the town clerk brings in and what Goodeween Hawkins brings in.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the boat agent agreement for 2018 with Goodeween Hawkins Navy Yard.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next, we have a license agreement with the Wolfboro Farmers Market.
This also is an annual renewal, Mr. Chairman, and I've gone through the agreement and discussed it with Mr. Martin, and we've made sure that everything's in compliance, and I recommend its approval.
Mr. Owen, I also brought the map, which I, that should have been, I think, included with it. I'll pass it down to those, and I'm, it's, you're, just your parking-
Oh, right.
-that I'd like to have. It usually is attached, and the copy I had didn't have it attached, and I'd like to have it attached to the sign. Other than that, I'm fine.
Sure. There's only one change that I would like to request on it. Normally, it goes from June to the end of October. We've had a request from many of our vendors that, now that they have high tunnels and they have longer growing seasons, they'd like to have the first market May 31st, and that would end up having the same 19 markets that we had last summer, if that's possible.
So, May 31st.
Okay, well, we'll have to redo the agreement then, so that'll, it would include those, that additional date.
I don't, I think that sounds fine.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If they have the, if they have the vegetables and goods, we should get them going.
They will, they will. We had spinach in March last year.
Did you?
Which is good. A lot of people looking for those types of things early on the season, and they requested if we could do it a little bit earlier, it'd be great.
Okay. So what's the new start date, I'm sorry?
May 31st.
May 31st.
I'll move that we approve and sign the license agreement with the Wolfboro Area Farmers Market, Inc., for the use of Cape Park in 2018, and that we change the start date to May 31st, and we include in the agreement the sketch of the parking.
It's actually Clark Park.
What did I say, Kate? Clark Park, excuse me. Please catch.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this license agreement? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, free time. Next, we have a lease agreement with the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a three-year agreement. It was inadvertently allowed to lapse. It expired at the end of December, which was pointed out to me by Mary DeBries a week or two ago, so we quickly scrambled and pulled together a new lease agreement. It's got basically all the same terms as before, except for the changes in the dates for the term of the, the new term of the lease, and also the rent has been bumped up $10 a month in the second and the third years of the lease agreement. It was kept level for the first year of the agreement. That's the same pattern that we've used the last two times, I think, that we've renewed the agreement.
Okay. Board members, any questions or concerns over that? Okay.
Mary's good with all this and everything, so.
Yes, we are very much looking forward to continuing with a new three-year lease, and we enjoy the space, and our visitors enjoy knowing that we are in that location. We are certainly committed to the three years. In fact, we, this year, we added a $1,500 investment of new blinds for the windows, very similar to the ones in your building. We kind of modeled after that, and trying to keep the building in a cohesive look and with the windows in that way, and very much looking forward to a new lease. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve and sign the lease agreement with the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce, Inc., for the space it rents from the town at the Wolfboro Drain Depot, for a term from January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I know Kathy's not going to be here tonight, but we have the grant agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for the milfoil control. Mr. Owen.
Yes, this is the annual renewal of a grant from DES to support the town's milfoil control efforts, and it's just, you know, a portion of the cost really, but it's, it helps offset a portion of the town's cost. It's an amount not to exceed $9,232, and the board needs to enter into the grant agreement, and I gave you a form of a motion that I would ask that you voted exactly as proposed, because we have to do a certificate of the vote that parrots that language.
I think the other thing, it is nice to point out that we are going to do a herbicide treatment, and towards that, we get $6,232, and we're going to still be in there with the dash unit, and $3,000 is to support the dash unit. They're supporting both of those methods for us.
Can I entertain a motion to?
I move to accept DES funds and to enter into a contract with the Department of Environmental Service, and further to authorize the town manager to execute any documents which may be necessary for this contract.
Second then.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
So we have a discussion, petition for conditional layout of roads in Winnipeg Estates. Mr. Owen.
Yes, this was a matter that was petitioned to the board by the residents of Winnipeg Drive. I had informed their spokesman, Mr. Quinn, that this would be on the agenda this evening, but I don't, don't see any of the Winnipeg Drive folks here. In, in any case, this is for the board to determine if you want to hold a, a public hearing to consider the layout of the road, Winnipeg Drive, and I believe you, you have received some advice from council in this matter, and I would leave it to your discretion, how you want to proceed.
I would like to make a motion that the board does not, at this time, lay out Winnipeg Drive and Night Pond Lane, subject to a Betterment assessment, in order not to violate the Bankruptcy Code Automatic State Provision.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Mr. Ford is here tonight to update us on capital projects. Mr. Ford.
Hello. Hopefully, got the report dated February 2nd, 2018. Starting at the top with the water line upgrade project, which is basically, that money is encumbered with the Senate Street project. We'll be doing work this fall, or this spring and summer, and should use up the rest of that money. The Route 28 project is basically spent out, and we are still moving forward with the Route 28 Steering Committee. We've been meeting every other Thursday and going over the different alternatives, and we've set a next stakeholder meeting for March 15th. Now, it's a busy week for you guys, but we were trying to find, you know, it just goes on and on, trying to find the right dates with all the different things going on, and we did want to keep the momentum going, and we've set that date, and hopefully, the committee will have some recommendations to the, to the board in April. And one of the things we are realizing, there's a lot of good questions have come up about impacts of the different alternatives we're looking at, and I think we're trying to get DOT involved, handoff to them, and maybe we don't have all the final answers, and that we can have, get, maybe have them work on some additional, like the traffic modeling, the difference between a traffic light and a roundabout, how that would work, and, you know, our concerns during peak summer traffic, whether or not we would create massive traffic jams, or would it help, so. That's still ongoing, and we should be back to you on that one. The Pine Street, Crescent Lake Ave., that project is basically done and ready to go out, but we are breaking out the water line to get that done ahead of time, and that's what is on the warrant, and we'll get that done, hopefully, in the fall, and this project will be then come in 2019. Downtown streets upgrade, we're using the balance of the money. It's $56,000 is going to be for work that doesn't qualify for the DOT project down in the back parking lot. A lot of the drainage from Senate Street is going Laney Street, and that'll be used up this, this spring and early summer. The Senate Street Reconstruction Project, which is two authorizations from '13 and '17, I did make a mistake there, I'm not sure what happened. The actual amount spent as of the end of the year was $702,000, and the balance of the encumbrances is about $1,721,380. That project obviously is on hold right now. We plan on getting back out there as soon as the frost comes out of the ground, and working very hard to get that completed. A lot of it done before July, and then finished by November of 2018. The sewer collection money is also, most of it is tied up in the Senate Street project, and that'll also be completed this, with this Senate Street project, when we do the sewer repairs, as we're ripping up the roads. The Libby repairs are, we have the fans have been arrived, they're at the, and we're going to be installing shortly, we're going to get the, so the oversized fans, which is part of that ventilation, is moving along, and should be done within the next month or so.
Isn't that kind of late to get those done? Weren't they supposed to be in, in the fall, so we wouldn't get the?
Yeah, the, between getting the architect specifications and getting them approved, there were some issues because of the, the fact that it will be below freezing there, so we went back and forth with the manufacturer, making sure we didn't spec something out that was going to be not guaranteed because of the cold weather, so it went back to different iterations, and it did get delayed. So, yeah, this was, but-
Did we have problems there in the fall because of not having the air circulation? Do you know, or?
Yes, there is still moisture there, so it's, the problem didn't go away. And we were going to mitigate it with the fans, the box fans, and I'm not sure if Adam ever got to that or not, but we were hoping these fans were coming soon, you know, they kept getting delayed, so I'm not sure if we-
Whether you got box fans in there until these came?
That's correct, yeah. Okay, the sidewalk upgrades project, again, this is, we've been piecemealing these, making this money go with the different patches we've done from the high school back down to Middleton Road. We have plans to complete that, that work this springtime. The dockside parking lot project basically is placed on hold. The design's been complete, and, but now it's put off for three years, so we'll probably, we'll take this project off the list, close it out for now, because not so much is going to happen for three years. We have the cap reserve set up, and again, once we get ready to construction, we'll then bring that back out and, and see whether or not we want to stay with the, the design as we have it. The town asset management plan, we have made quite a bit of progress. I'm still waiting back from the latest inventory work that went on in December, and for the buildings that were done, so we had four of the town buildings, we're all inventoried. I still haven't seen the results of that inventory, so that should be here shortly, and then we're going to build upon that to, again, have 2018, hopefully, get, get further along with the buildings.
Do, where's the money for the town hall? Is there money for it?
The town hall was, part of the encumbrances here, and is, and the work that was paid for in December, which has been spent now, was the inventory of town hall.
So you've inventoried town hall?
Yep. We've done the, the dockside restaurant and the lodge, so all those three buildings have been inventoried, so I'm waiting to see the, the format and the analysis of each of the assets within the building.
And there's no money this year for it?
Yes, there is.
Where?
It says $10,000 in consultants under building and grounds.
$10,000 in building and grounds, okay.
And there's $15,000 in the water department's consultant line item to implement the asset management in the waterside by-
Right, I'm not concerned about that. So the $10,000 that is in the building and grounds, that will be allocated for these buildings to keep this going?
To complete, right, yep.
So by the end of the year, we should have these three buildings completed? Is that what you-
Yes, and, and more, and more.
Okay. Thank you.
Some news on Pleasant Valley Road. The project design's been completed and submitted to DOT. The only thing we have left to do is obtain easements and, and to finalize the wetland permitting. The wetlands, a little sticky because it's a prime wetlands, and there's still some fine grain things we're going through there. And I had been in contact with DOT, trying to find out whether- And I had been in contact with D O T trying to find out whether we could get it moved up the list. I was really pushing to get it moved up, but then I hadn't heard from them, so I never put it on the C I P for this year. I got noticed last week that things have shifted, and if we're ready to go, we can go in 2018. Well, we didn't have the warrant placed on, and it's, even though it's an 80% of funding, we'd still be looking at, you know, 20% or $200,000, since we hadn't vetted it through the C I P committee, and it is, and it's in our C I P, but it's, they had it scheduled for 2026. But now that we're all ready, now they have some extra money, now they're deciding, okay, now we can give it out. If we'd have known four months ago, we could have put that as a higher priority, because I really would like to get that project done. We are very concerned that it's deteriorating. We did do some emergency repairs to keep the head wall, but I'm not sure how long that's going to hold. So this one will be a big push for 2018 in the C I P process, and it'll be moving from, hopefully, hopefully they'll be able to fund us in 2019, and that will, we'll move that from the 2026 schedule up to 2019, hopefully. Because we are, the design has been completed, they haven't given us the final approval because of getting wetland permit and easements.
And I think the reason they put it out there, that was the, where we were in the kind of, they said we could have it, so it wasn't like they kind of plunked it out somewhere as it was based on-
Oh, no, as you come in the door, you get stacked, but then we jumped all those people because we invested the money in the engineering, and the project is ready to go out to bid. So we did all those things, and I kept saying, maybe we'll get it, maybe we'll get it, but since we didn't have it in hand-
Yep.
And we had so much other on the C I P list, I didn't bring it forward. So we'll, we'll go with that idea that we will support this for 2019.
Okay.
And hopefully they'll be able to keep us there. And I really would like to do is to get it out to bid in 2018, so then we have a solid price, so we know exactly, there won't be any surprises, and as soon as we have our approval in March next year, we can start construction right away. The solid waste building design was been completed, and we've kind of put that on hold now as we decided that it wasn't a higher priority than some of the other ones for 2018. But we do have a balance there to price out those plans and get construction numbers on that, so we'll kind of, but that's kind of a lower priority. The wastewater treatment plant cap reserve, the sludge storage project has been delayed because of the weather. We are, as soon as we get to spring, we should be doing the repairs there and completing that. During the repair of some air valves, we found that a lot of our air piping, which was installed original in the '70s, has corroded very, and as a result, it's pitting, and it's going to need to all be replaced. So we were planning on spending a certain amount of money because we thought it was the valves, but it's all the piping. So now we're working with Woodren and Curran on looking at cost-effective ways to replace that. The other thing that we had done, and I think, I don't know if it was part of this handout, was a report from the, that we had done on the energy.
Mm-hmm.
And that was a grant we had received from the Regi Fund, I believe, through New Hampshire Co-op and through D E S. So we had looked at all the wastewater facility and the pump stations, identified some projects that are, you know, so they're going to give us incentives. So we have a summary there of how much money, and we're going to use this money to help get those projects, because all those things are things that are covered, and then we just kind of, again, reprioritize because we can't get some significant money that can go back into that fund. So we're looking at investing, I think, about, you know, there's the numbers right there, I don't have that sheet there, but how much money we invest, last page.
You know where it is.
So we're looking at a capital cost of about $90,000, and the savings would be over $20,000 the first year, so we're talking about a payback of a little over four years. Some of the projects are more, and so we're working with the New Hampshire Co-op and making sure we're getting qualified. And again, some of this stuff needs to get replaced anyways, and now they're all, so we can do the energy upgrades. The effluent disposal project, we were working on many fronts and to meet all the requirements of administrative order by consent. At the end of December, we, all those reports were submitted. Again, I've heard back from the state, and they're accepted, and they're now looking for us to negotiate kind of phase two of the A O C with the updated schedule. And right now, the schedule we were looking at is the additional pilot and permitting engineering phase in 2018, in 2019, and 2020 would be the construction of the long-term solution. I think we're a little concerned, a lot's going to be dependent on what happens this summer. We're going to be shutting the R I Bs down shortly and then trying to let the site to dry up, so we can get in there and do the pilot for the uphill interceptor trench, so we're trying to intercept the water before it breaks out, and thereby, then we can restore all the damaged wetlands that are below. The problem with that is, we, by not discharging it daily, we've let the pond fill. So I've, since I've been watching the pond for 11 years now, I know it pretty well, so I can kind of predict where it's going to be. So we shut it off now, come in August, we'll be at a point where I think I can recover and not have a problem, but I may not be able to shut it off in 2019.
Nineteen.
So I got to talk to the state, so we may end up having to delay construction of some of the work because we can't draw the hill down, we have to catch up again, which I don't think is going to be too big a problem because of the fact that environmentally, there's really no problem right now. We're still kind of getting through the technical of being compliant by getting it back in the ground. So I think they'll work with us on that, and that'll be, we'll find out this next year.
So how many months are you turning off the water going up to the R I Bs?
So we'll stop in February, and I think we'll be looking at August 1st for digging, so that'll be seven months, six months, with all, no flow at all.
That's, hopefully, hopefully we don't have a rainy spell.
Yeah, the rain is, well, it could be, it has to be significant to have an impact, you know, in relation to how much we put up there.
And how much we can spray.
What's that?
If you have it really rainy, it will be also how much we can spray, bring it down.
That's, that's the risk we take, yeah, yeah, yeah. But like I say, we've been doing it, I'm pretty confident we have a decent plan. I think the biggest issue is with D E S and making sure we don't put ourselves in the timeline, that's going to be a problem. The wastewater asset management plan will be up in two weeks from tonight to give a presentation that'll be similar to the water plan we did, but, and I'll have Underwood here to do a presentation that night on that, and that'll be wrapping up, and we should be scaling out $30,000 back on that one soon. The 2017 road money, as we, we have a balance there, all the roads are completed, Port Wedland, Winter Haven, we do have some drainage work at the bottom of the hill we have to get done, and we have to put some gravel on the shoulders. Oakwood, Spruce, and Tips Cove Grove are all, all complete, and the road surface management system has been, phase one is about 90% complete. Still working out some issues, and again, next year, we'll then take all that data and then figure out all the repair strategies, and then prioritize, and then try to develop this long-term plan. And then have the justification, which I've been saying for years, of we should be spending a million dollars a year, which we're trying to get there slowly, and that again, part of our overall asset management plan.
Now, is that being done on Excel spreadsheets, or is, do you have some kind of a program that's doing?
We are, right now, doing everything on Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
But we are looking, and with Woodren and Curran, we've been pilot testing called Utility Cloud. It's a, you know, asset management software, cloud-based, and that's what we're going to be doing on the waterside, because we're further ahead on the water than any other of the assets. We'll be having tablets, and so the workers will now, when they go to do a pump rebuild, they'll have the tablet, we'll be able to, it'll locate, they'll know where it's at, they'll be able to put a work order in, the time, input the pots and money, and then that'll be tracked going forward. And water leaks, anything, everything we do now will be put into the asset management plan and automatically linked in. So we're getting high tech, and quite honest with you, it's, it's pretty exciting. It's a little scary for me because I don't understand it all, but I know we're going in the right direction, and so again, hopefully, within the next year, we'll start seeing the dividends of the last three or four years pay off. And again, we've grown slowly, but I think it's sustainable, and I'm pretty happy with our progress, so. The Mass Lanning Park Lot basically is complete except for our educational signage. I was a little worried at the end of the project, so, because of finances, so I didn't go forward with that, but with our engineer there, we do have some draft concepts, and I hope to get those signs up for this, this summer, with the balance that we have there. Dockside Boat Ramp is underway. We've had some issues with, got to, started a little bit late this year, and then the lake jumped on us, and then the rate froze on us, so we've had a challenge down there, but we are making progress, and hopefully we will have that completed by springtime. The renovations to the old freight building, while technically the project is not going anywhere because we're not spending any money, we have been working with John Sims, and he is able to secure an L chip grant, and he's got donated money to match it. So with that money, which is, I think, $20,000, they're working with Aaron Sturgis, who was a contractor we worked with on Libby Museum, who did that innovative fix up there, so he's really expertise on old buildings, so he's pricing the restoration of the barn, in which we would jack it up, put a full foundation underneath it, and then reset it and restore it to its original grandeur, with the concept of, after it gets all restored on a new full foundation, the railroad museum would then be able to come in, occupy inside, build another climate-controlled box inside the restored railroad. So it seems like it's a real unique idea. This $20,000 proposal, I'll be working with them and trying to work with local contractors for the plumbing and electrical, and we'll be tying in a water sewer service. That work, again, will be coordinated with the Glendon Street extension work. We'll also be doing drainage work to improve the drainage, we have a lot of water under the building there now. So John Sims is hopeful that once we get this done, and we have a solid numbers, we'll come back to the selectmen with the, how much money they need to raise, so we can then start spending the money. Because at this point, the town's $95,000, you know, per the wording of the Warren article was, you need to have the rest of the money until we have that complete project, so. It is being worked on, and we'll see what happens. The last project on the list is the North Wolfboro Road. We had that as a specific line item, as the state had provided money to the end of the year, and we locked that money up with Frank Carroll, and again, as soon as spring allows, that'll be one of the first projects we'll start working on. That'll take any questions on anything else that, have on capital projects?
I've asked mine.
In addition, Mr. Chairman, there were a number of non-public works capital projects. Dave, you might want to stay up there for the Foss Field Pavilion one, to jump to that one if I can find it here.
On the back, top of each one.
It's, there's a balance of $89,378 that's encumbered and to completion. Is that correct?
Right, there's still unencumbered balance, yes, because we've just completing the rough plumbing and electrical, and the next phase is to insulate and sheetrock. We were contemplating doing that if we didn't have too much snow to remove, but just when you think it might be light and then starts coming in, so we, and we can, the insulators can usually do it as cheap as you can do it yourselves, and the same thing on the sheetrock, and so that'll be, some of the unencumbered balance will be going for that. And then this spring, again, once the ground thaws, we will complete the sidewalks and the concrete work on the outside of Pavilion. So we're hopeful we'll be, we'll be ready for May for a grand opening at that point. But right now, most of the carpentry is done, the building's looking really nice and coming together, so it's going to be exciting. I look forward to a nice spring grand opening with that facility.
Thank you. Additional capital projects, non-public works projects, there was the 390 line survey and engineering. There's a balance of, that project's complete, left a balance of $30,000. That'll be closed back to the electric fund. Middleton Road Cemetery project, that's basically completed, and there's a small balance from the project, $2,121. The building maintenance capital reserve fund, there was $63,966 expended from that. We just recently incurred an additional amount for the replacement door hardware on the front doors of the tower entrance to the town hall. The hardware needed to be replaced, so you'll be seeing that, that bill soon. Electric meter upgrades project, that's still ongoing. There's an encumbered amount of $100,031, and they expect to be completed by the end of March. And the Sewell Road voltage conversion project, that's basically completed, and it left a balance also. Expanded plus encumbrages was $352,000, so it left a little less than $100,000. So that's, that's it on the non-public works capital projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ford. We have Sarah Silks here to talk about her upcoming prescription drug collection event.
Hi.
Hi. I apologize for not being here earlier for the emergency management thing, but I got stuck in the snow at the end of my driveway, so, too low a car. Because of, we do our medicine collections at Household Hazardous Waste, June and August in Wolfboro, and we do one the second Saturday of September in Alton. But basically, there's kind of an area right during the middle of the winter when DEA does one in April, in October, and then nothing in the winter. We do have a box now at the police department, just inside the door, where people can drop off their controlled drugs if they want to. But the local pharmacies get a lot of requests during the middle of the winter for how can they get rid of drugs, and of course, the pharmacies cannot take them back. So we have a, some of these little half-page, and I will give you guys some, little half-page flyer that went up for-
Actually, they all, they all have it in their packets.
We have the flyers up at the pharmacies, and they're posted in various and sundry places, downstairs at the town hall, over at the police department, and as in the summer, we will print a bunch of them and give them to the I G A and Harvest Market. I have been down to the Wolfboro and also the Alton Senior Centers, that's a demographic that does get a lot of pills, and weather-dependent, I may be down tomorrow morning at the Alton Rotary. And I just want to let everybody know, in the public, because this is a new program, and I'm working on getting, I have been to Wolfboro Community TV, but I haven't seen it yet, but they're supposed to be putting on a little public service thing, and that rolling scrolling bulletin board, too. But it will be Saturday, February 17th. It will be at All Saints Episcopal Church. It will not be at our regular hazardous waste place, we have no heat. It will be 8:30 to noon, like a regular hazardous waste collection. Bring all of your controlled meds, your prescription meds, over the counter- collection, bring all of your controlled meds, your prescription meds, over-the-counter vitamins, herbals, pet meds, whatever, bring it all, we'll take liquids, cough medicines, creams, the whole nine yards, asthma puffers, and, uh, we will take care of free passes at the event, in the summertime, you go to Solid Waste to get one, dead of winter, we're gonna take the passbook right down there to the Episcopal Church, and I'll take care of it when they come through, because we're not collecting any hazardous waste, we're just collecting meds, so we have time to take care of passes, I've been working with, um, the captain and with the chief of police, and, um, we will have our two offices there, and Sarah Conley from Rite Aid will be our pharmacist for the day, and, um, she's been instrumental in helping to, us to get this off the ground, I have been in touch with Huggins Hospital, and they're supposed to be, the, these flyers are online, and they're supposed to be notifying all of their doctors' offices, and, um, Mr. Owen has seen to it that it is on the, um, town website as in an upcoming event, and if you go to Solid Waste and then Hazardous Waste, this information, as well as our brand-new Hazardous Waste flyer, are on our town website, thank you very much for all of your support for this program for all of the years, I've been doing it for 29 years, we've had the permanent site for 17, and if both towns didn't support it, it couldn't happen, and without the support of local pharmacists and police departments from both Alton and Wolfboro, it couldn't happen as well, so I, I really thank you guys always for supporting this program.
Thank you. Okay, let's see here, old business? The old business to go over, any other business?
I, only comment I'd like to make is I thought we had a, uh, successful deliberative session, I was pleased, we had a good turnout compared to what we've had other years, not a good turnout in comparison to a real town meeting, but, uh, I was pleased to see the number of people in the audience.
Town manager's report?
Uh, I don't have very much this evening, just to point out that the, um, kickoff of the master plan, uh, update process, uh, that meeting has been rescheduled to February 27th, uh, here at this location, um, also, I can report that the fire chief tells me that FEMA has approved the town's application for, uh, funds, uh, resulting from the October storm, where we had the, about the five-day outage and the outside crews in and everything, and we're gonna receive a grand total of about $5,000. Oh, that was the March storm, okay, that's last year, okay, we're, we're going back to last year, I'm sorry.
Blizzard, an electric...
The Blizzard, okay, so we're gonna receive some, some...
Blizzard bunny.
So we, we've been approved, uh, our, our application's been approved, but when we get the check is anybody's guess, it could be years from now, so... So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Committee reports, start down there with Dave.
Yeah, I had, uh, one ZBA meeting, also you had the deliberative session last night, as Leonard said, I was glad to see quite a few people there as well.
Um, I was at a Route 28, uh, committee meeting, and I went on vacation.
Brad?
Um, actually, I've had, uh, none, we had, uh, on the 23rd of last month, we had two meetings scheduled, the original public forum for the master plan kickoff and the, uh, annual meeting for Wolfboro Community TV, were both postponed due to weather, so, other than last, last night deliberative session, was it?
I've had no meetings, but I did start dragging out some of the ice houses for Fisherville onto the ice.
Good going, all right.
There's two out there.
Two?
Yep, the trolley and the taverns out there, uh, so, your ice house is out there.
Good.
The town hall is out there, too.
The old town hall, and...
Old town hall is out there.
Yeah.
Keeps getting moved around, but it's out there.
We're looking at, uh, March 10th to do, uh, a Fisherville event, uh, something in Choo, Mary, you remember? Yes, something in Choo that we did...
Yeah.
Brew and Choo?
Brew and Choo.
Brew and Choo, there we go, there we go.
Yeah.
On the 10th, so everybody should be ready to go out and enjoy that.
Questions from the press, we have no press, so, public input, anyone here? Of course.
Sarah Silkenly, this time I'm wearing my hat as secretary for the Friends of Abenaki, I just wanna remind everybody that on March 3rd, Saturday morning from 7:00 to 11:00, is the annual pancake breakfast over at Abenaki, also, this Saturday, um, they're having their first race over there at Abenaki from, uh, 9:00 to 3:00, and the people that have helped to donate money to get the race teams going, every year, they have more and more kids sign up, this is one of the first sanctioned races now that they've gone through that whole process, and it would be really great to support the kids, and, you know what? It's warm and snuggy in there, you got those comfy couches, and, you know, so it could be a great place to spend Saturday.
Thank you.
Yeah, hockey rink.
That's it, uh, entertain a motion to...
Make a motion, we go into non-public?
I'll second that.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, everyone.